And communications, I do have one. Carla Klink was in the audience. Please come forward. I don't know if you know Carla, but she's been around for a long time. Good work for us. This is a combination for you for being outstanding ambassador of our school district. As a federal support for 4K, summer schools and curriculum, she goes above and beyond to assist families in space. Her hard work and dedication helps our professional development day one smoothly. Carla contributes to the pleasant work environment at the research office. Thank you. Okay, Community Communications, I have one. Margaret Breach. Please come forward and state your name and your address.
Actually, Mark, carefully, yeah. Back up a little bit.
Well, I'm Margaret Breach.
Thank you.
And hopefully you all receive a copy of, oh, it's basically the X, Impact Statement concerning the vouchers. When I came to the January meeting, Budget Period, I was surprised to learn more about the vouchers. And I was surprised that they covered much more than the tuition. And I believe one of the common misconceptions throughout the state is that the vouchers cover the tuition. But I'm not going to talk about that today, I have limited time. I have put together what I see as a property tax impact. What's confusing to many people is that they're told that the year after the money is taken out for the vouchers, it gets recovered because these students come for general state aid services. But if you look at the bottom of the sheet, I'll show you what the average state general state aid is. And this can vary greatly amongst schools, some get nothing. And so 100% ends up on the property taxes. You'll notice that at the bottom, I show the average. You see, the vouchers are increasing in average about $217 a year. And what I noticed is that the elementary school vouchers and the high school vouchers are going up by the same dollar amount every year. But not the general aid. And because that general aid is not keeping up with the vouchers, the amount we left on the property taxes is getting greater and greater every year, which you'll see at the top. I want to say something about 2015-16. You notice that that is much higher. The reason that is much higher as a percentage than the others is because they were deducting the full revenue limit per student, but it was a little over $8,000, $9,000 a year rather than just the voucher money. I believe it's important for all of us advocating for our students for public education, we need to start contacting our legislatures concerning the property tax impact. It's not fair that you have two districts with everything the same, except one has some private schools in it. And they have to, out of their budget, they don't get anything extra in terms of revenue limit for these students. But it comes out of what we have left for the rest of our students. I was pleased to see that our board used the property tax levy to get back the dollars we lost. Otherwise, you would have had the same price. And that's going to get worse and worse every year. Well, two reasons. Look and see. Thirty more seconds?
I was gonna say it wasn't me.
That's three minutes to add people or not.
Just finish it up, Margaret.
Yeah. So also notice that the number of students keeps increasing. And so while this year was only eight students, right now, it's pretty much kindergarten class that qualifies. Next year will be kindergarten, first grade. And so take what we had this year and multiply it by about nine, it's actually going to be a much deeper impact on our district and all districts.
Thank you, Margaret. Bethany Rissler? Please state your name and address.
Bethany Rissler, called Timl's Elementary.
Thank you. You have three minutes.
My name is Bethany. I live in Monominee and two of my own, we two children go to Oakley and Emmane Middle School. I just want to share a couple of things. When I was maybe 10 years old, I was riding the school bus on the way to school. I was wearing a pink and white shirt with small red flowers on it and jean shorts. My hair was in a ponytail. A boy whose name was well-known then, and still is in our community, was sitting behind me on the bus and pulled my hair. I turned around and told him to stop, and he proceeded to lean over the seat, tell me I was a fat, ugly girl, and punched me in the arm. When I got to school, I told my teacher what had happened, and her response was, "He probably did it because he likes you. But if he does it again, we'll talk." That single experience taught me that it's okay for boys to hit me, to comment on my body, and to completely disrespect me. Knowing that one teacher completely blew me off, told me that I was overreacting, it wasn't as bad as it made it out to be. The bruise on my arm told me a different story. But I wasn't about to tell another adult for fear that I was wrong, or that someone else would find out. I'd be a snitch. This is still happening toward youth today. Only besides hair pulling and vet shaming, our students are repeatedly being verbally and physically harassed on a daily basis because of things outside of their control. In the U.S., approximately 3.2 million youth ages 8 to 18 are LGBTQ. A 2018 study done by the Human Rights Campaign found that 74% of LGBTQ youth do not feel safe in their school classrooms. And just 5% say all of their teachers and school staff are supportive of LGBTQ people. And we're wondering why they may not want to tell multiple adults in the school, hoping for some resolution? Our youth are asking for your help. They approach you as a board to make you aware of what's happening in their school. Bullying is happening in their classrooms, in their halls, in their lunchrooms, and in their locker rooms. Whatever policy we currently have isn't working, or it's not being enforced or assessed. To the board, please, as an advocate for our LGBTQ students, hear their voices, hear their pleas, listen and learn from them, and take action. To our beautiful students, we hear you, the community hears you, parents hear you, even if your own do not or cannot hear you. Do not give up. Your place is here in this room as a citizen and a community member just as much as mine is.
Thank you. Bethany, do you have a copy of that that you just read that you could give?
Yes.
If you want me to read it? Yes, if it's okay. I can give it to Jane. Thank you. Okay, I don't have any other communications unless somebody... You can come communicate, but then I'd like you to fill out one of these forms as well.
Yeah, I just filled it out with that, sorry.
Okay, well, if you could just bring it to me, that would just be great. Great record of it. You will also have three minutes, and please state your name and... Thank you.
All right, my name is Cameron Hargrove, and six forty-three Broadway. My issue is very similar. So my daughter goes to school at the middle school. And I recently started going to some of my community care meetings and found out that the bullying policy had had an amendment on January 13th. And I believe January 22nd, I was at the middle school telling them that changes needed to immediately be taken because my daughter was being called a n-word and having things thrown at her at school by a boy that sat at a lunch table right next to her, and nothing was being done. I told the principal that if things did not change, I would not be against pressing charges on a 12-year-old because it's a hate crime, and it should be treated as such. Since that time, he has said that the boy would have indefinite lunch detention and be kept away from her, and that he would do restorative justice. And a couple of weeks later, he is back at the lunch table next to her, still messing with her and her friend group, not as much talking to her because he will specifically say, "Oh, I can't talk to you." But now calling her friends, lesbians, and yelling it down the hallway. And the bullying policy doesn't cover any of this. It is a very weakly bullying policy, and there is no restorative justice program set up in the bullying policy anywhere. No one has talked to my daughter about how she feels, how it's affected her. No one's had her go see the counselor, no one's asked about it. The boy has apparently talked to the counselor about what it means to say those words and about white privilege. But I was not told about that until I explicitly went back and asked. And that's not restorative justice. He's not looking at someone in the eye and able to see and hear how it impacted them, and apologizing, doing anything to learn and improve as a person. Because there's a reason for this, and he is currently hitting two protected classes.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Did you want to just finish your sentence? I'll let you do that.
I'm gonna push you guys to work on the bullying policy. I am here, and I will help in whatever ways I can of writing. I have a brother who does restorative justice programs in middle schools in the Madison School District that would be willing to give resources. But it is urgent and imperative that this change, not only to protect the students, but to protect the school, because right now, you're at liability of being sued for hate crimes. So please...
Thank you.
Hey, you have an issue.
Okay, I don't have any others up here unless somebody has. You do, if you could.
Hi, my name is Rose Christensen, 322 14th Street Northeast, Monominee, Wisconsin. I went to North School at this location many years ago. And there were issues with kids at that time, but it was part of growing up. The problem I have is, it is happening not just in the schools, but it's in the workplace. The last four years, I have been a target of workplace bullying. So it has become bigger throughout the community with the culture that has been accepted. Look what's happening at New W. O'Clare. That shows you the problem is much more widespread in our schools. There does have to be something done by everybody to correct the culture that we're all living under, not just in our schools, but in our communities, everywhere. Because I guess maybe when I grew up, both of my parents were one of nine children. That meant I had 32 aunts and uncles and 70-some first cousins who all kept everybody accountable for their actions. We no longer have that. The community has got to, they see wrong, stop it in this place.
Thank you. Do you have the forms? Anybody else? Next call. Thank you. Okay, next, board members who are in the communications. Any board members have any feedback that you'd like to...
I guess I could say something. Yeah, sorry. I have something short, I promise. Last week, I went to the WASB Law Conference, Legal Updates. And I have to say that at first, I was a little nervous because I saw all the sessions were run by lawyers, and I was seriously concerned it was going to be really boring. However, I am here to say that it was actually very interesting. And one of the things about having attorneys run the sessions is that I trusted what they were saying, and they had a lot of really useful information. I did, so I think everybody's already seen this in front of them. The title's a little misleading. It's called Public and Private School Cooperation. But it's everything to do with vouchers and special education services, child fund. It's kind of like, I don't know, I guess I would call it like a cheat sheet for legal issues in regards to those issues. I also have all this other information that I brought with me that I'm not sure what to do with. So if anybody else has got it, maybe you have all this free time, ask me, I'll give it to you.
Thank you, Tricia. Anybody else? Dr. Joe?
Just a few things. Dan Paulson had shared an article about use of phonics for teaching reading instruction and literacy, and that's linked in for board members, very good article. As you know, you know, it's kind of a... Brian and I were talking about it at our director's meeting today. It's kind of a pendulum that swings back and forth a little bit. Phonics is definitely something that our district has focused on this past year and a half now, really, in terms of piloting a program and then implementing that with their instruction, and it's been successful. Other things, just a few training opportunities for school board members is included in board docs. And then also the most recent DPI legislative update that was uploaded actually today. So hopefully you get time to look at that. And if you have any questions, please feel free to give me a hand.
Can you tell me, just remember, I believe the school play starts this weekend, correct?
Yes, the play.
I heard it's smaller. So the first production is 7:30 on Friday night. So for those of you that are interested, it should be a great production. If you look close, you may see someone who was up in the meeting. You gotta look really close, so.
Kidding aside, though, the information's on the website. There's a number of performances this weekend and then into next weekend. The musical Little Mermaid. There was a little bit of an issue with some lighting today that ended up overheating some curtains. Mr. Drake and his staff did a great job of keeping all the students safe. Appreciate the fire department responding before it became a problem. So we're taking all the precautions necessary there. Thank you.
Let me write them on. I entertain a motion to accept the personnel consent agenda as written. First by David and second by Chris.
Heather, Lannerman, the second.
I'm sorry, Heather. This is to approve resignation of Kurt Mueller. He's the MHS School Counselor, for the end of the 2019, 2020 school year. Any discussion?
Is he going to stand?
Say yes or no.
Yes.
Motion carries. It'll be up in a second.
Motion carries. And I just wanted to... And I just want to just let everybody know, board and... Normally, we do not do business like this during our second discussion meeting of the month. We usually draw all of that action, or the voting comes first. But this was kind of timely because we want to get that advertised and out for a new counselor at the high school. So it was timed, that's why we did it tonight, to not do it earlier. Okay, next. Entertain a motion for the resolution to alter school district boundaries. Lynn? Heather? Okay, any discussion about this? David?
Do you have any feedback from Boyceville or Monominee United? If they say anything, I will just...
I think it's just a matter of losing property value. So since they denied it, we approved this, then someone has to go down to Madison to represent the district at the hearing?
Yes, if they file for an appeal.
Any other discussion? Okay, Jane, let's go.
Can I ask a question? I lost track of what we were voting on. So are we approving the resolution by Boyceville not to change their boundaries?
No, we're allowing them to annex the property into our district.
We're voting to them, for them to become property of the Monominee School District. Boyceville's already said, "No, we don't want them to leave." So by us saying yes, it will go to the state board of design.
Motion carries. Just for the purpose of, for some of the board members maybe in the audience, just to refresh. This was brought forth to us by a couple that lives in Boyceville. And they bought some property, and half of it happens to be in the Boyceville School District, right down the middle. And then the other half happens to be in the Monominee School District. And where they want to build their house is in the Boyceville. So they wanted, we're not already an open school here, they wanted to keep them here. So that's what we're voting on, is to allow them to annex their property into the Monominee School District. Thank you. Going on to the discussion items, clerk's report of primary election results.
Okay, so we met the board of canvassers last week, on Thursday, and certified the election results. Top welter was Andy Huthby, second was Andrew Swanson, third was Charlie Schneider. There was a tie for fourth between Heather Klannerman and Dan Paulson. Sandy White was six, and Josh Rissler was seven. So Josh Rissler is out, and the other three, or other six are competing for the three slots. And today, we drew names for the next, for the spring election. And bound order will be Daniel Paulson, Charlie Schneider, Heather Klannerman, Andrew Swanson, Tom Huthby, and Sandy White.
Thank you. Okay, we are going to have a presentation on clean energy resolution, and that would be Kate, is that your name, Kate? Please come forward.
Hello, thank you for the presentation. I'm Kate Dean. I am a member of the Oakley City Council and also the Western Organizer for Wisconsin Conservation Voters. Do you need my address?
No.
No, okay.
You can just keep it at this point.
It's 603 Summit Avenue. So I wanted to come and talk to you a little bit about local opportunities for clean energy. As a young person, I had often been really frustrated that the state and the federal government wasn't taking more aggressive action to move our communities towards clean energy. I think that there's, for me, there's a big urgency around climate change. There's also a lot of really big financial benefits to clean energy as well. And so when I joined the County Council, I started thinking about what our local governments can do to take upon themselves this leadership role in moving our communities towards clean energy. And so we worked for about a year, and in February 2018, the Oakley City Council passed a resolution committing to 100% clean energy by 2050. It's kind of a broad commitment that has subcommitments within it. So there's a ten-year commitment from 2020 to 2030, from 2040 to 2050 as well. So there's kind of some like, some sub-goals as well to make it a little bit more tangible. And in the time that we passed our goal, we have been working on a plan to reach that goal. It's obviously a really big goal. It applies to both our city operations and also the private community at large. So basically, everything within the city limits, our intent is to have it be powered by clean energy by 2050. And so it's taken us nearly two years to sort of figure out the ins and outs of how we're going to do that planning, and then actually execute a really rigorous public planning process that we're expecting to pass a vote on and hopefully pass our plan this month or next month. And so it's certainly a slow process, but even in the time between when we set our goal and when, now that we're setting our plan, I've noticed a really big change in how the staff kind of sees little opportunities to achieve that goal in everything that we do. We've taken steps to impact the transit system, the way that we construct our streets to allow for more biking and walking. We've even set aside capital improvement dollars to invest in clean energy infrastructure. And since we did this on the Oakley City Council in my day job, Wisconsin Conservation Voters started to look at the real opportunity on the local level and the real opportunity to take action collectively to achieve a more sustainable community. If all of our little communities are doing it together, we can really make a big impact. And actually, more than a quarter of all Americans now in the country are represented by communities that have made this goal, either on the city, school board, county, or state levels. And so we've been working with municipalities like the city of Altoona, the city of Monominee, the Dunn County, and also communities all across the state to consider what it would look like for individual municipalities to set goals like this and then create plans to meaningfully achieve that in the ways that are going to best suit this community. I'm a local government junkie, and so that's what I really like the most about these goals, is that a community can set the goals and decide what's going to work best for them. There's no retirement on like, this is how you have to achieve these goals. These are the most financially reasonable ways to achieve that. And so I helped the Oakley Area School District set these goals as well earlier last year, which passed. And they're working on establishing solar panels on their high schools and other projects like that, but also incorporate education for their students to learn about different things in the vehicle structure within their school district. And so I'm hoping that this is something that the Monominee School Board will consider. I believe that there's a draft resolution that you were given from the Oakley Area School District, and I think they did a great job on it. Of course, it's certainly up to you to, you know, create whatever language is going to be best suiting this community and this school district. But I hope that you'll take that and consider moving forward. But I hope that you'll take that and consider moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Penny.
Kate. Have you done any research into what our district has already worked on and is achieving in green energy? Because we do invest in solar panels, we do recycle, we have a lot of great things in place, and we have our 30-year maintenance plan, which kind of explains a lot, not quite as much. So you threw out a lot of amazing platitudes and ideas, but no hard, solid ideas. And what is this going to cost our district? You can come in and say, let's do green energy, it's amazing, which I don't disagree with. But we're a dollars and cents business, organization. What do you see that's above and beyond what we're already doing as a district? And what will it cost us and what will our return be?
Yeah. So those aren't numbers that I have for you readily here. But as a Oakley City Council member, those are concepts that I intimately understand, right? You can't, you have to really, as a local elected official, you can't spend money willy-nilly. And you have to really see some return on investment. We know that clean energy is now cheaper than dirty energy and that it's only becoming worse though. We also, we also know that this is something that we just have to do. I, scientists across the world say that we have about 10 years to go carbon neutral by, in 10 years, until we see irreversible effects of climate change. And so that's not me, that's 99% of our science community across the world. And so, and so I guess, if I can finish, that's, that's not something necessarily that I'm here to debate, to debate, because that's something that I see as science. But I must be, Monominee School Board or School District is already 100% renewable energy. I think that there's still more to do and I think it's financially worth that investment, so.
But you, you aren't able to give me any numbers. And even your city council that you're a part of hasn't voted this through. And I'm not against attempting that, but I want to make sure that it's financially responsible for our district and for our community as a whole, as a business owner in Monominee, as a homeowner in Dunn County. The numbers need to make sense. And I hate to say it, but when you're throwing out 99% of the scientific community is saying that we're going to be destroyed in 10 years, I don't know where you're pulling those numbers from, that's a little bit of a struggle. So if you could give us some numbers, I would greatly appreciate that.
You didn't look at any of that, just science.
So first off, the 99% is just simply back to Kate in the question, unless you believe propaganda. But the other thing is that there are no numbers because, as she said, this is the beginning of a process. And in order to come up with those numbers, first off, you have to take a step to commit to it, which the resolution in Oakley did. Then, after you do that, it becomes a planning process and you start looking at things like we're going to like to solar energy and other stuff. Okay, so okay, we've got two investments in solar. What else can we do? How else can we generate clean energy? And actually, she's totally right about clean energy being way, way cheaper than other forms of energy. In fact, right now, they are no longer building coal-fired power plants in Wisconsin and mostly the United States because clean energy is cheaper. We actually had somebody at the Wildlife Federation two meetings ago showing us all the costs and how, I mean, that's, once again, that's just silly fact. Can't be used to do. Okay? So really what we need to do is, we have students, they have a future, we want to have a good future, clean future or not. And right now, as a step right here, we say, okay, are we committed to our students' future? Educationally, but also environmentally, socially, responsibly. And if we are, then we look at first step, doing the resolution, yes, we are committed to clean energy, how we want to get there, what the numbers are, all of those things. That's still in progress. Right now, it's basically a moral question, do we care about the students or not? Do we care about their future? We know the science, the science is indisputable. And so, yes or no?
Dana.
Since we're already doing a number of things as Penny has pointed out, it seems we have partially made a commitment to this already. I think maybe what you're proposing is that we look at it more systematically. And just, I think, you know, as a school district, if we've already invested in clean energy and, you know, the things that we're already doing, we already have made a investment, shouldn't we look at it systematically and maybe think about a plan? You know, it wouldn't have to be very comprehensive, but you know, something a little bit similar to our 30-year plan, maybe a parallel plan, because it would be basically along that same line. I guess that's what I'm hearing is just for us to say, maybe we should look at it systematically rather than going about it as we have any kind of opportunities.
David.
I think they're asking that they're looking at building a natural gas fire electric plant in northern Wisconsin. Not everything is on its own. The atomic, International Atomic Energy Agency, International Energy Institute, last week came out with findings from 2019 that the U.S. led the world, over 140 million tons less carbon produced than we did the year prior. And so 140 million ton reduction, the rest of the world increased over 400 million tons of carbon produced outside of the world. And so the policies that this country has in place, you can take motors nowadays and run them inside buildings, like I know the new style skates chairs that come out, they said we could run in our conference room all day long. And because the emissions are so good on them, and I, my question is, what staff do we want to cut in order to enact policies like this in this district?
I guess I do have some more remarks, but I can let you guys continue.
Chris, go ahead.
Well, I appreciate that, but we'd like when we compare our scores, we usually compare them from peers, so to compare.
United States reductions in carbon emissions, take the next to the rest of the world.
It's not, it's not productive. So, I mean, I appreciate that fact, but it doesn't really tell us where we are in comparison to the people we want to achieve anyways. I think that we should be really thankful that you came here to help us understand that there's a growing community that's right around us that's already doing the work. So I don't think that we should be hostile towards you at all. And I don't think we have to consider who we have to fire. One of the things we've been talking about that's really nice is that we can make collective board actions that say, maybe we can put some pressure on state legislators to make this a goal that we can realize by asking for funds to bring some cohesion together of what we teach in the classroom and make sure those kids know we practice what we preach. I mean, that's, that's why we're, you know, on a board that's projecting leadership. So we are already doing some things, but I think, you know, being hostile toward the person that's trying to explain what's happening all around us. You know, we could maybe think that certain things you're asking for, like who we're going to fire, that seems to be like, you know, building some tension. And also asking her for numbers when she's just here explaining an agenda that's already going on seems a little hostile. And it's up to us to provide the numbers because we're the people in the district. So I think we heard some consensus where we like the idea, we need some numbers, and we can start thinking about that. And we can start promoting a way we can like what we teach in the classrooms, which is science, with what we do as a board. And that sounds good.
Yes.
I would just like to say that, first of all, I thank you for coming in and presenting. And hostile or not, I think the whole purpose of this was really just for you to come in and share, you know, what Oakley is doing and some of the things that we can do. I don't think it's about losing staff or, you know, spending money. I think it's just saying, hey, we're going to work on clean energy. And obviously, we'll go on everything we have to do. It's not going to be like, you know, we're going to spend $30,000 on something today. This is just informational. Jim.
I just want to say, David, I'm sorry, that your statement about who are we going to cut to do clean energy, we don't even know. There's no facts out there, we have no numbers, we have no figures. We may actually save so much money if we get higher extra sales. I'm sorry, that statement was just absolutely over the top, I'm sorry. That's just my opinion.
David.
I guess I heard a statement at the high school loan, half a million dollars a year if you want to switch that all over to clean energy.
Oh, well, we can do that, but. Well, then you can't even talk to us, that's just bullshit.
Charlie Schneider.
Excuse me.
Sorry, Charlie. I don't want to put you on the spot, Charlie, so when they accuse me of pulling stuff on the thin air, but.
Well, just the idea that.
Sharing information with all board members.
Excuse me, Jim, you're online.
Oh, that's not a lie.
Okay, what I'd like to say is that I find it interesting that you would come up with that, and maybe it was Charlie that told you that, but I think it's important that you come clean with that because Penny's asking for information that she's not able to give, and then you telling us that you find this out because you don't want to tell us who it was. So to me, that's, that doesn't make sense to me. That's a part. Anybody else?
From the school district standpoint, and I know that some of this is, there's two different sides of it, but I do think it's important to point out that in pillar five, you know, so we do have a strategic plan. We spent a lot of time getting input from our community about the strategic plan. And there was really nothing in there about renewable energy necessarily. However, in pillar five, facilities and operations, there is a deliverable strategic action in terms of implementing an energy management policy. So we do have an energy management policy. The next step is going to be looking at the rules of that policy to make sure that we're using our resources the best that we can. I know that's not exactly what Kate's presenting on, but I do want people to know that that is something that we look at here in our school district.
Yeah, I guess I'll just kind of finish by saying, if you don't mind. I, I'm not here to give you hard numbers about what your school district is doing. I'm not here to tell you who you should be firing. If somebody came to me as a city council member and told me who to fire, I would not have that. And so that's not my intention here to do. I believe deeply, as a person passionate for a local government, that the local community and the local decision maker should be making decisions like that. But that is your responsibility and your privilege to be able to do that. What I'm here to do today is to ask you to consider whether in 2050, if you want your community and your students to be moving towards a world where our air is cleaner and that we, you know, we don't have to worry so much about climate change or clean drinking water. That's the goal, that's the, that's the value I'm asking you to set today. And I think that once we set that value, we can start to look at planning after that. We, we, it's inconceivable to see our communities be completely powered on 100% clean energy, right? Like, we can't even conceive of that. And I think that in order to achieve that, there's technologies that that's going to be created that doesn't even exist yet. And in fact, Xcel Energy has put their, put their faith in that. They, they, as a business, as a local business, large business in our community, they've set a carbon, carbon-free goal as well by 2050. And they have a plan to get to 80%, but they don't know how they're going to get from 80% to 100%. They're, they're relying on kind of the progression of our technology. And so all I'm doing here today is to ask you to do the same and to set that value to show your students of today and of the next 30 years that care about their health and their future.
Thank you. One more thing I'd like to say about that is that when I was at the community forum, I had several people come and tell me more about this, this thing, and they said, you should get that Kate in here to talk to you about what's happening. And so I think that when we look at our constituents and some of what they have to say, I think it's important to take a look at this, you know, going forward. Thank you. Okay, next. Review 20, 2020, 2021 MHS course recommendations for the present 15 students.
Brian, do you want to go ahead and take those, please?
So in front of you is a list of courses that students have registered for at Monominee High School for the upcoming school year, the 2020, 2021 school year. After meeting with Mr. Drake and the high school administration, the list that you have is the classes that students have signed up for that currently have enrollments of less than 15. Procedural piece on the part of the board each year to take a look and consider those classes. And ultimately, you'll be asked at the next meeting to vote on whether or not you approve high school in running those courses that may have initial enrollments of under 15. So Mr. Drake and his staff are in the process of reviewing that by department. He does meet with the departments to go through and take their recommendations into consideration. You'll notice that some of the courses have some notes next to them where there are two, you know, different level courses that are similar in nature that they, the departments are recommending run concurrently to allow students to be enrolled in those. So this will be shored up a little bit more between now and the next board meeting in the reload process at this point in time. But if there are any questions, my name is Mr. Drake is here this evening as well to be able to answer any questions that you may have, but similar in nature to what you've seen in the past.
Anybody have any questions? Penny.
With the business classes, are any of those tied to, I apologize because it's been a few meetings, tied through to that certificate course with Chippewa Valley Tech?
Sure, that's a great question. At the present time, the courses that are tied to the Business Administration Associates degree course are all recommended to run for over 15. We've actually seen a slight increase in overall enrollment to business center.
Dana.
Well, I guess I would expand and question, are any of the courses that may not run tied to any of the other programs that were advanced programs or offering in the future, specifically in effect, those programs?
I guess I'm not understanding your question.
Are any of these classes that are possibly going to be dropped, like the business, are they tied to any other programs that could cause a problem down the road? I'm sure your folks have already considered that and the answer is probably.
Brian, if I could just, just to make sure you understand what we're at. So policy 343.1 on class size and combined split grades sets a target for high school class sizes of 18 to 30. And we're allowed to run classes down as low as 15 if we need to. Anything below 15 requires specific authorization from the board. So what we're saying today is there's a number of courses here that, like every year, there's a number of courses that don't have as much student interest. And when they start doing the process, we're going to identify some that even though they have less than that 15, we're going to recommend that they run. So that's what you can expect to see at the next school board meeting, a list of classes that we're asking you as the board to provide that authorization to run, even though there's less than 15 students. And many times, those are the classes that either they're close to that 15 and/or their class is needed for some sort of progression, whether it be through a certification or through advanced programming, or a class that may, you know, end up running more of an alternating year basis. So that's really what we're getting at.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Chris?
I was just wondering if, when this comes out next week, if you could provide us some information about what some of the impact might be. Because sometimes there's temporary legs in the way in which those students sign up for classes, RIA classes, maybe in the event of impact they want to think about, like long-term, what that means. This is just like a cycle that is off with their enrollment, or is this long-term means that somebody's, the course is going to be moving away? But sometimes we feel threatened with that scout because sometimes with enrollment, you make actions that have long-term repercussions that might marginalize those programs. So give us some feedback about that in terms of why you're going to be cutting those and be assured that it's not going to hurt health of what those programs are all about. Is that okay?
We can do that. And, you know, one, one thing that is important, I think, you know, Joe. I think Joe connected on that. We do have some classes that typically do run on an every other year basis. And we've had some years where they would peak up where they run on a cycle with that. So, you know, we do have, you know, 80 physics would be an example of a class that typically runs every other year. So while it's not running this year, it has enrollments of less than 15, we would expect to see that class the following year. And there are several of these that have fallen. But by that, that's helpful.
But again, we're not asking the board to cut any classes. We're actually asking the board to add some classes. There's several classes that haven't met the standard. But we're asking the board, because of the needs of our kids, that we want to add some classes to next year. Okay, great.
Some of the online classes that are, do you have a different threshold for those at all? Or is it just if they're under the 15, they're subject to not renting?
We generally use that 15 threshold. We have some years when we, with an initial offering, made the commitment to run the course, you know, at lower than that 15. But one of the reasons for having them on going back a few years ago is to be able to provide some flexibility and some choice for our students. The other, the other piece that we do have, because we do have the virtual school option as well, there are times where we may not run a class with our staff member. But if that is an option that the student needs, we are still able to offer that without building it into a standalone class.
In some cases, it makes more sense that there's only, you know, two or three kids. It might make more sense to run through the virtual school program instead of investing a whole period of one of our teachers to run that online class. And in some of these cases, we have a choice to make. Either offer a section that may be down, you know, 13, 12 students, something like that. But then that impacts class sizes through the other classes. So what we're trying to do is use our resources the best that we can while still providing the most opportunity for students. Those are kind of competing values, choice and then also efficiency. And we try to balance that the best we can.
I think it's very useful information, Brian, that you shared with us. I'm kind of piggybacking on what you're saying. Interested in trends, about what it looks like. And then just another comment I got, for instance, is it's just, sometimes it's tough just schedule-wise. Like, I know, for instance, like, my daughter would like to take, like, pet science and the natural resources one that's listed on here. But sometimes they just have so much going on that it's really hard to fit it in. So I don't know how much looking at the schedules as far as where they're offered. And for instance, there's only like one giubangial, so it's kind of tough sometimes with flexibility. But I think sometimes that hampers things as well, so just a comment.
It certainly does. If we had, you know, seven, eight teachers, you know, and you could offer every course every hour, you know, but then again, you know, you're talking about a lot of extra staffing and low, you know, extremely low class size in some of those cases. But we can provide some more information before we ask the board to consider this next meeting.
And we've got that trend out of the process.
I know my kids quit for that just to get A and still stay in music and some of that stuff. But taking online classes, just three or three lectures, so if they have a good, we do that.
Dan?
And I think part of the problem is that there's so many hours of periods in the day that students can take classes and probably have an array of classes at one lot. And out of them, taking 15, 15 periods a day.
Chris?
Just to check, do you have the same target class size for online as you do for in-class? Do you really have online classes that are 30% enough?
We have some classes that are over that, especially during the summer, when you go through, like personal financial management is one of our higher in health online.
Because I'm in.
So then you break it down.
Maybe it's impossible to reach, but I think like the recommended practice is like for an online class to be able to effectively manage it and give the feedback is like 18 to 20. So that seems, do you ever? Maybe that's something we should, we should talk, like, maybe a more thorough discussion about that because that's, that's hard. Having been put in online classes at that size, it's impossible to manage effectively feedback discussions. Some of the more important aspects of learning, they have to get an online education because you're not in class face-to-face, you know, giving feedback and participating. So maybe that's something we could discuss in the future.
And I think I may have, not in this school, but when you, major point, we do have ranges at which we have as far as, like during the summer, how many students we'll have and then, you know, how many other responsibilities a staff member will have at that point in time. And we do have, you know, the threshold of students that can take a class per time allocation that the staff member has for the classes.
Anybody else? Thank you, great discussion. All right, next. Discuss 2020, 2021 preliminary budget estimate. And I'm assuming this goes to Leah.
Okay, so you have in front of you the 2021 budget plan timeline, the budget estimate, and then also a snapshot of the Baird Forecast Model. Each February, as you know, we provide an early budget estimate for discussion. And then in May, we discuss it again because a lot of items, things change between now and then. And then in June, we look for a, for the board to approve a preliminary budget before, to set the annual meeting and such. If you take a look at the budget estimate for 2021, some of the key assumptions that we have is our membership count. We're estimating, we take the September of 2019 count less the senior class plus the 4K and kindergarten classes to help with our estimate. We have a transfer of service estimate at 50,000. And then the 250,000 contingency is assumed as well. The per pupil revenue limit increase is set in state statute for next year at $179 per pupil. The per pupil categorical aid is set at $742. There's also a supplemental per pupil aid of approximately $3, but that, that amount can change. It just depends on the state as a whole, how much money is left for DPI to allocate. So right now, it's looking at $3 per pupil. So that's included as well. The CPI is actually 1.82. We're projecting the cost for nominee. It will cost 1.92%, so that's what's been applied to salaries and benefits. The dental and health insurance increases, I'm estimating that to be 3%. We don't have renewals in yet, but I don't anticipate a large increase on our health insurance renewal. We'll have to wait and see what happens there. Early retirement OPEB, looks like we're going to have a decrease based on actual, we have more retirees coming off our health insurance plan than are going on. So that, that cost is going down. The transportation, we base that increase on CPI or 1.92% utilities, I'm estimating at 5%. And insurance at 3. We're also estimating 4K tuition. And again, this is just early in estimates. Things can change between now and May. But considering a 1.92% increase there as well. Some increased costs in open enrollment. The per pupil open enrollment amount increases every year. It's an amount set by DPI as well. So those are just a bunch of the key assumptions that we're making in this preliminary estimate. And also, I noted on the bottom, we included the continuation of the one-time classroom supply budget for next year as well. That was something that we had increased last year.
That went back to the governor E versus Vito. And we were able to give each classroom teacher $100 additional to spend in the classroom. And that was very well received, so we'd like to continue that.
And then looking into the future on the Baird Forecast Model, as I said, next year's amounts are set by the state ready, so we know those numbers. I projected the September membership count to remain flat for the next five years, so that is an estimate. And then the per pupil revenue limit increase for future years at the $179 increase is just an estimate that could go up or down. Same with the per pupil categorical aid increase. Just depends on what the state sets next year for the next biannual budget.
Thank you, Lee. Any questions from the board? Jim?
The district in the past has done some demographic studies periodically to kind of get an idea of what our student population could be. So Daniel, do you have any idea when the last time we did one of those, or you should think of it another?
I believe it was two years ago, the board, we had a proposal from, oh, what was the name of that? It's through UW. And at that time, it was decided that the proposal really, in looking at the last one that had been done, it really wasn't much more accurate than projecting our enrollment out. So at that time, the board decided not to contract that. It wasn't worth the investment. We do track enrollment, though, and we feel like we have a pretty good trend line going on.
Okay. Anybody else? Lee, I really appreciate you putting that together. It's really hard with all the unknowns. So, yeah, a lot of unknowns, we all know. Okay, next, Policy 432, first reading of the elementary attendance areas.
So I appreciate the work the elementary principals and director of student services, Tony Kowizki, did on this. Tony, you maybe wanted to run through it a little bit, please?
All right, we're looking at the attendance area, elementary attendance area policy. I'm recommending some, some changes. I don't know if it's just word changes, but I would say the big change is will we allow for attendance area exception in our elementary schools? Where in the past, we've always asked families to apply every year. And so this is basically saying that once they've been granted, although it's only granted for that year, we're not requiring them to reapply every year. That it will, we'll look at that again, but we're not requiring them to fill anything out on a yearly basis. This kind of matches what we do even for open enrollment or open enrolled students. So if we have the students that are open enrolled, they are not required to apply every year. So this kind of matches how we, how we handle open enrollment. And so I would say it's rare that we ask a family to go back to their home school or their neighborhood school. That's rare that we do that. There has been some times that we have. Like attendance or truancy becomes an issue. It's a discussion with that family is, maybe is the school that's closer to you may be a better fit, especially if you can get your child to school or a bus can come pick them up. Maybe that's a better option. So this is just allowing us to not have them reapply every year.
Any questions? Heather?
I just have one recommendation.
Yep.
So in the second to the bottom paragraph, where it says such attendance areas exceptions shall be, shall be requested writing via online portal by the parent. Can we just, for consistency, say parents or guardians?
Yes.
Because you kind of, you mentioned that throughout, parenting guardian. It's kind of in the, do you see what I'm saying or seeing?
That's big block.
Yeah, kind of big block. Because just the paragraph above it says parents or guardians, so.
Heather's really good at that.
Sorry.
No, it's good, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I guess my question is, is, and I think, I think that the policy that you have here kind of says that. Like, for instance, if we get a lot of open enrollment from outside and it's, we're already overcrowded with our own students, then we take a look at that and then you have to send them back.
So when we, when we do that, they open enroll into an elementary school, because we have multiple elementary schools, we accept, we will accept that open enrollment into our schools, but we can place them in, they can, we ask families to give us what their choice is. But if that school is reaching class size, top of a class size, we would say, you know, you've opened enrolled, you're watching Wakanda, but there's no space in Wakanda. So you can choose Oklawn or River Heights or Dumbarton Map. And we give families those options. But we do have the right to say in our elementary, what elementary school that they're assigned to if they're open enrolled into us.
Thank you. Next. CISA 10, shared services contract.
So this is pretty standard. We'll be asking the board to approve this at the next meeting. You can see that we've reported with CISA 10 for some E-rate services. We've had a lot of great progress working with CISA 10. Katie's looked at this and is recommending that we go and continue with that next year. Are there any questions for Katie on it?
Are there any major changes from last year from contract at all?
Katie?
No. In fact, we just recently learned that we can also attend any of their, like, technology coordinator meetings free at that CISA as well as the project. We have a CISA 11, so that's kind of nice because they're writing Chippewa.
Okay, next, CISA 11, shared services contract.
CISA 11, we had not received the proposal in time to really prepare for the board. So what we did is we voted in this current year's contract. We're anticipating a similar recommendation that we'll be sharing with the board at the next meeting. But we really just wanted to kind of give you a baseline because with the timing of when these contracts are due back, we would like to have it approved at the first meeting in March. So this is really more of an informational item. The directors will be going through and reviewing the services, evaluating how the services have gone, and then making the recommendations to the board in March. Any questions?
Pretty standard. Good next, discuss ASC front desk staffing.
Sam, do you want to take this one, please?
Sure, absolutely. So as we've discussed before, Shirley Favor, I apologize. Shirley Favor is retiring as of April 1st. And so we have been looking at job descriptions. Leah and I have been talking about the needs of the business office and the needs of the HR office. And we are making a recommendation to do a slight increase of hours to make one of, we have two, currently, we have two five-hour positions. One that works from 6:30 to 11:30 in the morning and then the other that comes in from 11:30 to 4:30. So we have 10 hours of coverage throughout the day at the front desk. We're suggesting an increase for one of those positions to be an eight-hour position and leave the other one at a five-hour position. We hope that can help with some sustainability of the, one of the positions. And just due to a lot of increases that the HR department has taken on, it would be incredibly, incredibly helpful to have somebody there for most of that day. So a number of different reasons, but that would be our recommendation.
And the reason why this is coming forward now is because of the timing of Shirley's retirement. Had it been a school year aligned with the school year, we would have just added it to the staffing plan for next year. However, with the April 1st retirement date, we want to bring this forward. And we plan to post a position and ask the board to approve that addition to the staffing plan. Any questions?
I just want to clarify. So what's happening is you've taken two half-time, making it one full-time, but then you're hiring another half-time with that full-time.
We're actually adding three hours to one of the five-hour positions.
Yes, you have that correct.
Okay, thank you. Clint?
Specifically, Sam, what are we looking at for net increase? I assume on cost with wages?
About $17,000.
It's going to really be dependent, though, on the employee and whether or not they take the different benefits and assurances they take. So it's kind of a rough estimate.
Thank you.
Anybody else have a question? Okay, next. Letter I, discuss students presenting during community communications. This is a hot topic, very sensitive issue, and I would ask that you be as respectful as possible. I also would ask that you do not use any student names in this discussion. Chris, I'm going to, for you, because you asked for this to be on the agenda.
Okay. So I think that when we think about how we make our messaging, what our policies are and what our protocols are, we should probably have some shared understanding of what's going on. Now, I brought up, this didn't happen, was it 10/14 when those kids came for it?
October.
Yeah, okay, so that's right, okay. And at that time, there was some discussion about chain of command. I know that we've discussed this several times and that these are students and they're not our employees. But there's still consistent discussion about a chain of command that students should have followed that doesn't exist. So you read a statement about who's welcome to present at the community forum every time we have a meeting. There's no chain of command proviso. There's no chain of command clause. There is no demand that anybody have to fulfill that requirement. Also, students have spoken before, right, to this body on numerous occasions about the same subject, which is bullying. And we haven't asked for a chain of command, suggested that they violated policy, or that there'd be a public discussion about the nature of chain of command. So I'm really worried that we're creating a double standard for how we review or discuss people to present at our public forum. And that's especially troubling because this has something to do with bullying and the way in which these kids have been marginalized and what their experiences were. And so I think we have to be very careful about how we project, how we as a board receive them, as a body receive, those people that come forward. Another thing that I think we have to be very careful of is that when you make a double standard for a marginalized community, I think that it was raised earlier by somebody from the community that that puts us at legal risk. We're publicly illustrating the fact that we're creating different standards for different types of students. I mean, even when students come to talk about how they need to have better facilities at their sporting events, we don't have any discussion of a chain of command. It doesn't happen. When other kids have come forward to discuss, you know, experiences that move us because they can, you see them bullying, we don't ask for a chain of command, but we have here. So that's kind of problematic. I'll just go through a few points quickly. Or do you want me to just take a, you can respond to each of those and then I'll continue later? Would that be better? Do you know?
Go ahead.
Okay. And then when we think about how we present that to the community and how that's discussed in the community, we have to ask ourselves where that came from. It comes from somewhere. At that meeting, students who presented earlier in the board meeting had left. The community members that were here were the parents of those kids that were presenting and their supporters, their allies. Then there was our principals, and then there was our administration, and then there was our board. So you have to ask yourself where that misinformation is coming from. None of those speeches were made public. It was not recorded. There was no other possible way that people keep getting information about what they said, how they said it, or if they violated a chain of command. So that came from this board. When we're making those demands on our students, not only are we creating a double standard that makes us liable for lawsuit, but also burdening those students with unfair responsibility. It was suggested that kids between the ages of 12 and 15 have the responsibility to first talk to their teachers, then talk to their counselors, then talk to their administrators. And then, once they've talked to their principals, then they can talk to the board. That may be how you file a grievance if you're an employee to a certain extent. But these kids were under threat and their complaints were real. So to make them go through a chain of command that would take several months when their personal bodies were threatened is unduly burdening those students. Now, once again, these students come from a marginalized community, and to make a double standard, to then burden them with undue responsibility to have to verify what they said, that also is leading us open to a suit. Now, we should be very clear that there is no chain of command and that those students can't be subjected to a demand that burdens them in a way that's unreasonable. So you have to ask yourselves, like, well, why are we making these charges? On 214, in the open portion of the meeting, I told you all that those students followed a chain of command. Some people in the board apparently think I was lying. I also spoke to Joe on 216, and I verified that students had followed a chain of command, even though they didn't have to. Still, a narrative emerges from this board that those kids violated a chain of command that doesn't exist when they actually followed the chain of command. So I have to ask board members who are telling the community that these students somehow did not follow a chain of command, why they didn't ask Joe. I asked Joe, tells me information, right, and I get that information, and then I act on it. So for the board members who are making a charge or even considering the question of chain of command, why didn't you get the right information? So now we've got a board that's created a double standard, that's created an unfair burden of proof, and now has misrepresented the facts for students who are bullied and for students who come from marginalized community. So now we have to go back to our community member who suggested that we are putting ourselves at risk for a suit. Because it wasn't like these kids were just, you know, told they didn't belong. Their bodies and their personhood and the right to exist in these schools was threatened. And we know those incidences. So to present the facts that aren't true, that create a double standard, and that affects kids who have suffered emotionally, I have to ask the board members, why did you do that? I have to ask you, why didn't you ask Joe? He could have told you. Those kids followed a chain of command they didn't have to follow anyway. So when things come up at public forums where the community's been misinformed and we know where the misinformation has come from, and we know that information is hurting children, and we don't even know our own policy, it's concerning. Lastly, there's the misinformation about the amount of bullying that's been going on in our schools. I keep on hearing about nine to 10 reported cases of bullying. That may be true. What were the letters that were submitted by the Saga group? We have a disconnect in terms of how we're recording our bullying incidences. Those kids are reporting that they've been called names fag, queer, and according to our bullying policy 411.1, those are all cases of bullying. Why aren't those being reported? How is that not being given to us? And we need to think about how and why we're informing our staff. Even the way in which Jay is reporting what's happening at Saga, it needs to be detailed, detailed in terms of bullying incidents. That then has to be reported to the principal, that then has to go to Joe. So there's a breakdown in people understanding what bullying is, how it relates to the LGBTQIA+ community, and a fundamental rejection on protocol that the board is supposed to be operating by. You're disrepresenting the facts, compromising the integrity of students, and marginalizing the effects of those incidents. So that doesn't look good. And I guess that's where I wanted to start the discussion.
Heather?
So Chris, you said the chain of command was not followed with the students. When was that stated? Because I don't recall any of us stating to the students at that open forum to follow the chain of command with them.
We discussed it at the end of that meeting in the open forum. It's happened several times, and it comes out in public forums. It's well-known to the community that there's a chain of command problem that doesn't exist. People at this very table mention chain of command on a regular basis. At that afternoon meeting, when I was sitting right next to you, I told you that I followed the right protocols. If you didn't believe me, which obviously people didn't, you could have asked Joe.
I didn't say I didn't believe you. But we also have policy that, as exhibited from 65, where as a board member, if you have information, again, as Amy said tonight, you need to share that. Was there or was there not a meeting that you were at that evening before, on that Sunday, to help script and rehearse with those students and encourage them to come to the board? And I think it caught a lot of us out of guard just by reactions that we're seeing here. So again, I guess I'm a policy follower, a rule follower, and I understand many students don't know where to go and get it. You, as a board member, you could have encouraged or shown those individuals where to go for that or met with the principal or counselor at that situation. I just feel like there's also some things that maybe weren't done properly regarding that information in that situation. And the other question I have is what letters are you referencing by the Saga group? Because I don't recall seeing any letters.
They were probably not.
Oh, so those are the letters you consider? Okay.
I actually can't believe you just said that. I'm sorry.
What's that?
That you said that we rehearsed and scripted what those students said?
What you rehearsed and just helped them draft it, what they, they set themselves?
Stop, stop. They did not. Jay and I heard what those kids had to say, the doctor names was in Jay's living room. And I told them they had to look you people straight in the eye because you're going to try to marginalize what they said. And you're doing that. That's their words. They followed a chain of command. We spoke with the principal. We spoke with his counselor. We spoke with Joe, who did, I did, and the Saga reporting is following the chain of command, 411.1. Report the instances to a trusted adult. Now, I don't know what you guys do when Jay reports these things from Saga, but they're collecting feedback on a regular basis.
I don't want to trivialize any of this, and that's not the point. I just, I think what you said, Chris, several times about checking with me, I know you and I met and you shared some concerns. I just want to make sure that everyone understands I did not meet with these students. I did meet with you. So I guess I'm not quite sure what you're referring to in terms of my involvement with this.
I didn't say you had involvement. I asked why board members didn't ask you to verify the fact that they followed the chain of command before they started making claims that they didn't follow the chain of command, which Heather just did again. The children have reported these incidences, okay? I was in with the principal. I was in, right, with his counselor. So we did that. The thing that's blowing my mind is that you guys still don't seem to understand is that there is no chain of command. You're continually making a double standard that has not been applied to students who aren't from the LGBTQIA+ community. There is no prerequisite for those kids to have spoken at the meeting. If you want to make one, you got to make the policy. And to hold people accountable for a policy doesn't exist, especially for a group that's been bullied, especially for a group that feared for their safety, seems aburting them once again with an unreasonable requirement. Now, if you want to know why I didn't do this on Sunday, it's because I didn't hear it until the day of the board meeting. I don't know if you know this, but my kid hates me for moving him here. What he's experienced ain't right. So if you think I'm, like, meeting with these kids and coaching them, they don't want my approval. They want change. So I have to reiterate, you don't seem to get it. They aren't employees. There is no chain of command. I'm not scripting children. They have real experiences, and you continue to disrespect them.
Amy?
I don't personally feel like any of us didn't think that those students couldn't come in front of the board, or adults for that matter. I don't care if you're sixth or if you're 96. It's your right to come in front of the board and speak. We've had people come today, and it's always appreciated because we don't know what we don't know, and I think it's great. I'm a little concerned about you using the phrase marginalizing because I think that we took what was brought to the board and worked really hard on it. You had a huge impact on that, Chris. You pretty much formatted the whole anti-bullying statement. Amy did the video. It was implemented. So I guess I'm a little concerned and confused as to how you say that their concerns were marginalized. And I love the fact, I'm glad that it hopefully is helping the LGBTQ students, but students in general when it comes to bullying. Like, the gentleman that spoke and said that his daughter is having situations. I hope that what we're trying to do and what we're working towards is going to be advantageous to all students. And I guess my question for you and for anyone else for that matter is, what are we doing?
Hmm, I got that. But I got you next week. Two weeks from now.
The community cannot help. Dan?
There are a number of issues here. Oh, one, okay. We're acknowledging that anyone has the right to come before the board and speak. And every administrator knows Tinko versus Des Moines. That basically says that students do not lead their rights at the schoolhouse door. So they have all the rights of every adult here. So they can come and speak and preach us, present their grievances. So I'm not sure whether we're a question of how a chain of command, if they have the right to come here, why is even a question of whether they have a chain of command? I looked through the handbooks. Neither the high school nor the middle school handbook has anything that mentions a chain of command. There's a little section on, each one, the middle school has a much better section on bullying than the high school one. The high school one, and the last page, and the very last page is of the student handbook, they have sections on bullying. I think for any of us or anyone to question whether they have the right and whether they should have followed a chain of command, I think this board needs to denounce that and say, they have a right to come up here. We welcome what they had to say, and we are actually glad that they spoke up so that we can tend to the problem. I think that the whole board should speak to that, should make that declaration so that it's clear to everybody. We're not putting any restrictions on our students before advocating for themselves. In fact, board policy says that board members are leading advocates on behalf of the students and the public schools. That's in policy 111. So if we're following policy, we have to do that. We have to be advocates for those kids when they come here and talk with us. So there really should be no question of this. Shouldn't. I don't understand why it's even being brought up.
Anyone else?
I think that would be a good show of, like, you know, board's mischief that we just made a letter to say that. These kids didn't violate any protocols. What they said is verified and true, and that we support them for coming forward. That's great. That sound good?
Penny?
I'm sorry, Chris. I have to disagree because at that point, do we write a letter every single time someone comes in and has a disagreement and says, we support it? And says, "We support it." We'll be writing letters and we're pulling the base. I felt we already made our point by doing the anti-bullying statement, by supporting that. I think we're kind of beating a dead horse, unfortunately. If we're writing another letter on top of the anti-bullying statement, on top of a video, on top of everything else. That's just my opinion.
If the problem was changed.
Heather.
I, what Penny said before, Chris, with you kind of taking the lead with the bullying, with the recommendation for the video and the statement. I took it to be also to include everybody, not just that particular group. I didn't feel like we should have singled out that in particular group, and maybe that's what they're looking for, is to be singled out. But I thought the bullying statement, and after they came forward and we did the bullying statement and the bullying video would include everybody, race, religion, sex, gender, you name it. It encompassed everybody, not just that group. So is that what they're looking for? Or what is exactly something that they're looking for? Are they looking for a specific quality policy for the LGBTQ? LGBT, I can't say it. G I plus.
It's so long, man. No, so we'll just answer both of those. One, it's not beating a dead horse because people keep on talking about a chain of command that doesn't exist. So that's why we're talking about it. And two, it's not what the kids want. These are community letters that were questioning what our position was on this because it was very unclear to them. And it seemed to a lot of people in the community that there's been some misinformation about what happened and what our position is on. So this is a rare instance where apparently we've been unclear, and then people are concerned about it. And since the public has asked for us to address it, it hasn't really been this case. That's why we're having this session, right? Because there was a letter, and we're discussing it. And then we're supposed to make our opinions known in terms of how we're addressing community concerns. So it seems pretty clear that this is not beating a dead horse, and it's not like going to happen every time. And it has really nothing to do with the video. And it has nothing to do necessarily with kids making any demand right now, but if responding to a community concern, all that was expressed in the letter.
Okay, so you're trying to put a letter, sir.
So I respond back to the individual, and I said, "Appreciate when anyone speaks at a board meeting, and welcome freedom of speech. There are policies and procedures in place for students to report bullying, harassment, pretend or support, school hours days, school entrance age, conduct on school buses, and so many more topics. I believe in following policy and procedures for accuracy and safety for all parties and situations. Policy and procedures provide guidance and help streamline processes, but individuals need to follow them, and it helps from complete chaos. Time and resources are used more efficiently, and the district will be able to grow and achieve desired goals when followed. I believe in following the procedures to help the school district move forward in achievement and to establish, it helps establish rules to create standards of quality of learning. Without policy and procedures, the school and district would lack the structure and function that is needed to provide the educational needs for all students." So that is my stance. I'm that, I'm a black and white gal, so.
Trisha.
So just for clarification, are you saying that they shouldn't have come and talked to us then?
No, I'm saying they should. I never once said they should not. I welcome the students, as Dan said. They can come. I, like Penny said, we don't know what we don't know, what's happening out there. I don't know what's always happening in the middle school or the high school. I'm not always privy to that information. I welcome them. But I also believe that for policy and procedure, maybe this could have been taken care of in advance. Or not advance, but it could have been maybe done in more timely fashion if it's been going on for quite some time.
So when the students came from, in regards to the athletic field, and they talked about the lights and the challenges, the games, and how it gets dark out, were they not supposed to be here then because they didn't follow the policy and procedure to actually come and speak?
No, they were talking about, sorry. That was a topic on this complex, on voting on a decision. I took into consideration every individual that came and spoke, and every email that I received, and that is how I had weighed my decision, voting on it. That was that conversation.
So how do you determine who can come and talk if you can?
I'm not saying anybody can come and talk. Anybody can come and talk, but that was a vote. We're not voting on anything right now for these individuals. Or we voted on the bullying policy, and we voted on the video. I guess I don't understand what she said. What forums?
Chris, can you speak up here?
I think it was Mrs. Munoz that brought the soccer team, she brought the soccer team kids here, and they were expressing their dissatisfaction with the fields about lighting, and really cool they had a sound system. So what Trisha is asking you is, this seems to be pointing out that there's a disconnect between suggesting, even in your response to the community member, that there was a problem with procedures and policies that were followed, or it could have been handled better, or it should have been something more timely. That's what you just said.
I'm saying that with policy and procedure in place, when some issue like this arises that is huge, individuals feel they're being bullied, harassed, maybe it could have been taken care of earlier instead of longer periods. So this, to me, it's apples and oranges. To me, you're talking about the sports complex voting for phase two, which included X, Y, and Z, and you're talking about these individuals that came and spoke about bullying. Am I missing something?
They were involved, there were both cases where students were coming to talk to the community forum. Same thing when the other students came to talk about bullying. No one called them out for following proper procedures.
No, anybody can come and talk.
But you just suggested that they should have done something.
It's fine if you talk, but I want you to take turns, okay? Take turns. Yeah, I'm, now I'm getting confused. Because on the one hand, it appears that complaints were made and didn't seem like, our policy says that basically if you're not satisfied at one level, you can appeal to the next level and to the next level. I guess the question would be, were these people informed that if they were not satisfied at each level, that they had the right to appeal to the next level? Were they aware of the chain of command? Or were they just basically under the impression that they talked to the principal, and they weren't satisfied with it? That is the end of the line. I don't know. I don't know. That's a, I don't know, that's an open question. But something compelled them to feel that they had to come here.
Please just know, I appreciate anybody to come and speak. I feel like now you're attacking me that I don't welcome freedom of speech. And I love once individuals come and speak and voice their pain and concerns. It's America, we can speak what we want. I appreciate everybody that comes, so.
Penny?
Let's be realistic here. Two of the adult individuals involved in this process are well-aware of the chain of command. One hundred percent aware of the chain of command and how this needs to work to get through the process. This is incredibly frustrating because these kids are the ones struggling, and the adults are fighting about things that shouldn't even, this stemmed from a community, from the candidate forum. Why are we even having this conversation? This came from comments from the candidate forum, not from our board directly. So I'm really having a hard time of why we're even going down this path. This was not our board fighting this out. This was candidates in a forum making comments that they're able to make. How did it make it to our boardroom? When we have a strategic plan and a budget and everything else that we needed? There were classes that we're trying to decide if we're going to cut or not cut. How did this become such an issue when it was a forum?
First off, when this came up, I went back and I actually watched the entire forum. And nowhere in the forum did I see any candidate say that kids or anybody cannot come and present their community communications. I think if you look at it hard enough, and you look at it through maybe biased eyes, you can be offended by anything it said. Nowhere in the forum was it said by any said candidate, board member, whatever, that people cannot come to community communications. I think what does more damage is rallying up the troops, so to speak, on social media and telling them to come here because there's going to be a fight over this. No one on this board thinks it's okay to bully anybody, regardless of race, sex, sexual orientation, gender identification, whatever it would be. I think it's very frustrating for a lot of us that there's a lot of things that we need to be doing to help our kids. I think teachers are scared at this point as to what to do in the classroom because of what's going on in this board. This board can't conduct itself or professionally like adults. I think it's time to move on. I think doing another statement just does further damage.
Chris?
Okay, let's try to say this clearly. Here, we're still claiming that there's a chain of command. Like, this is what we're saying, is that the board doesn't understand the policies for how meetings are conducted. Like, there is no chain of command, okay? You can have a chain of command for employee, and they can file a request as if they're going to do a chain of command. If someone talks to us and say, "Hey, I've got a problem with this agreement," I'll be like, "Oh, okay, I'll listen to it," and be like, "Hey, I think you need to go talk to Joe," which is what I usually do. This is not any of those cases. These are kids that have talked to their counselors, they follow the chain of command, they met with their principals, like, they've done the things they're supposed to, they're reported to trusted people. Like, we know this is true, right? You can ask the principals, they're right here. So there is no.
So we also have proof, you know, of one chain of command that, you know, what we have in there.
Yeah, so you keep on saying that there's a chain of command problem that doesn't exist. So this is why the community is confused, because you're confused. Like, absolutely, one hundred percent. You were just talking about procedures that have been followed better. The procedures were followed. You're still marginalizing them because you're saying you did something wrong. You said you didn't follow the chain of command, which isn't something wrong.
I did not say that.
Okay, I won't, that's fine. But you still seem to believe there's a chain of command that doesn't exist. You also said that adults could have put them in the right direction to handle the situation better. I don't think that that's a concern or a claim that you can make. I mean, if you're there with me on Sunday or Saturday, maybe you could have made that claim, I could have done a better job by Sunday or Saturday, but you weren't.
I would put myself in that position because it's against board norms.
Okay, that's good. So basically, the problem is that the board still believes there's a chain of command that doesn't exist. So that's something we should make a statement about. We welcome students to come. It doesn't even have to be about these students particularly, no problem. But that this is an open forum that doesn't demand a set of clauses or provisos or a burden of proof that people have to make before they come here. And that we're not aware of anyone violating any of the protocols we have in place so that we can get public feedback on important issues. So can we all agree on that? Is there any problem there?
What came at you, sir, please, what are we bringing up?
There is no chain of command that people have to follow in order to speak at an open forum. Sounds good. So we can correct the misinformation that's now been spread at this meeting, that there's a chain of command that people have to follow before they can speak, or there's procedures or policies that should be followed before they come here. Sound fair?
That was their side.
Penny?
I think, you know, little nuances in conversation sometimes can lead to confusion. Heather, when she talks about chain of command and following policy, she's talking about in certain instances, not when it pertains to students coming to the board presenting. I don't think she feels that students need to follow a chain of command in order to present at board meetings at all.
That's great.
So I agree with Clint. I'd love to focus on student achievement and things that really matter in this district. This matters, but when we keep bringing it up and stirring it in the community, it creates an aura of dysfunction on this board, dysfunction in the district. Our teachers lose faith in the board and the administration. Our counselors get frustrated. I think it's hard on everybody. We've already gone through our bullying policies, changed them. We've created a statement, we've done the video. All of us, myself included, fully support students coming before this board and testifying and talking about the district. I think that's information that is good for us to have, and we need that. I think, in my opinion, it's time to continue on.
My only concern is I just want those students to know that they are not marginalized, that they were heard. And I think some of the things that we've heard in the community out in the community, where it comes from, I don't know. But I guess what I'd like to say is that I would hate for those students to feel like they were, that they're hearing these things, that they did something wrong because it took a lot of courage for them to come forward. Chris?
I'd also like to say that my son and I are really working on a relationship. He doesn't hate me, hate me, but having endured some of those things has been unquestionably hard for our family. And perhaps maybe I'm a little defensive when I hear people saying things that I prepped my child, or that I had them pair, which happened tonight, or when I suggested that my kid didn't follow policy and procedure. He's a hard-working guy, he does everything by the book. In fact, Bart got your game an award for, so, not just doing the right thing, but always doing the right thing. Always. And I doubt many of us in the board could say that we're that person.
Thank you. Okay, next is review extracurricular staff contract requests. That's pretty much informational, any questions? We do a school board book study. I suggest that we take maybe a five-minute break for everybody to get up. Also, Joyce Newler left some cookies for the board. So if you want to grab a cookie, that would start the session in our faces, that would be.